This feels right.
It's a lot more sensitive here. In the spirit of togetherness.
There are four. There are four people in the.
You are engaged.
That looks all right, so we do have enough.
Well, what we use it to like.
If you're younger, so you're more like. I know, I know you're nervous person.
Thought you opened that up, I was like, that's what I want. I love these gummy clusters. They're so good.
I don't know how to get your education, I don't think I know how to make it.
Either. Hello, everyone online, how are you?
Great.
Doing good.
We do have nothing.
It's horrible, really.
Thanks, Ken.
I'm thinking for now.
Oh, this one, maybe it's. I love I'm enjoying.
All right, the rest of the candy man. Maybe we'll bring it back some skittles. I saw bacon. On my got out. But. From him all that. Thinking air, air, there was over and doing your plane to hell. We're going to one.
I just got a text from Tanya, she went to the Office Evolution. Place by mistakes. She's on the way.
Alright.
Everybody wants to view it here. I'm ready to enjoy. I'm running here, I'm running like hell, don't put it on, I'm running.
Andrea, just move, yeah, switch over your, no, no, you can just move your, the nameplate. You can sit there, just. I was gonna say, you can sit there, just move your nameplate, there we go. That's all.
Hey Phil, what are you doing? I, I. On work, then I'll drive home. To a whole place, Phil, what do I. Oh, my wedding's staying there. Mr. President. They dropped the D C S.
I'm sorry. I can hear you just fine, everybody would seem to be having so much fun with their candy, but I guess we do need to get this meeting started.
We should have.
Let's call the meeting to order and Kevin, you can do your, do your part.
Have a roll call. Yeah, we're ready. That's a twist. She's on her way, Tanya's on.
No, you.
That's on. Hello, hello, testing. Testing, so I was gonna say, I'm sure. Testing. Oh, Randy's on.
I'm right to one, come on.
Okay, we're on.
Beth Ackaway. Well, it's chess.
Yeah, okay. That is, that is online.
Are we recording?
We are. Are we? Yeah, I'm here.
Alright, I know. That's how you play it. Chris Edwards.
He's online. Chris.
Randy Pitts.
Here.
Adriana Popovich.
Here.
Kevin Sluka is here, Rick St. Pierre and Chad Stevens.
Here.
Okay. Thank you for joining us for the November meeting. We're screaming toward the end of the year and the holiday jubilee. We've got a lot to cover tonight, not least of which is some, some budget issues. That came out of our presentation to the governing body. That's probably going to take up a lot of our time and hopefully we can, we can move through that. As quickly as possible. Excuse me. And that's, that's really all I've, I've got to add, to, to say right this minute. But let's, let's. Get, get right to it and. If there's not any questions regarding the minutes from our October meeting, I'd love if someone could make a motion to approve them.
Also.
Hi.
Any votes?
Fantastic. On the committee reports, you know, we distributed the, the, the normal and ordinary monthly financials. Nothing notable. To raise there, you should have all received those by email. But let's kind of get right into the, the rest of it with, with Natalia and presumably Dana will have some. Some input as well on the, the budget issues, the garage and so forth.
As soon as you start talking, it should.
Okay. So as everyone knows, the council asked that we. Reconsider our budget and added twenty five thousand dollars for the minus sidewalk repairs. With the understanding that the border will match. As two to one this year and next year they asking us to find fifty thousand dollars and would they plan to match one to one. So I think we are discussing the immediate budget twenty twenty six, we're looking at twenty twenty seven. So in your packets, you have an updated budget with the suggested requirements. And they not only kindly also included the summary of the changes that we are proposing. So. One of the biggest changes, of course, is adding twenty five thousand for the minus sidewalk repair fund. The border agrees to use the old police headquarters, wow, gosh, so that's saving us five thousand dollars. We will also added twenty two hundred dollars for the cancer revenue for candlelight. The hope is that we will make eleven hundred per month, every month, but for now only January and February is confirmed.
Right, that'll be nine out of twelve months, it's, I, I just wanna, right, because the United Reform Church does not have A C. So we can't run them in those hottest months.
But we have now only as in twenty two hundred dollars for the two confirmed months. We remove from the, we're proposing to remove the restaurant week. It's only two thousand dollars, but there hasn't been much interest, so it's been removed in this budget. We reduce some community support and sponsorship with thirteen thousand dollars, that's saving us two thousand dollars. We're removing the model application development that is actually. Things that we already have. Since we are going with the annual subscription rather than a completely new app, so that's eighty five hundred dollars. We reducing slightly kind openings and we reducing the business mixers, all in all. This totals to twenty five thousand dollars. So there is not really a change to the bottom line.
Let me tell you a question, did, did the promotions committee go over all these slight variations in events as well or no?
The promotions committee didn't go through this variations, I mean, they are so small that I don't really see a, a big issue. We have discussed the restaurant week extensively in the promotions committee. As you know, we've tried to do two down tables now with the presidents. There hasn't been much interest, we've sent out surveys, we've already submitted one or two responses and one of them was. Not interested. We are still going to make an effort to engage with the food and business, uh, food and beverages. We just don't see a path to have a meaningful restaurant week. This year.
Yeah.
Yeah, or next year.
Did I ask just for that point as I'm scanning all the numbers and looked up the other day? We still have eight thousand dollars of the haunted history event. Which I think is. Without a real understanding, it seems to be a little bit higher for what we want to accomplish, so what's.
Could I, could I, sorry, could I add to that? Last year, it seems like we spent. Wanted history, we spent twenty five hundred and we're proposing eight thousand, so next year I.
So.
Yes, I'm gonna do it. You wanna?
Yeah, so in years past, prior to even my coming here. The contract with the company Haunted History Productions was a shared revenue contract. Before I came, they decide, and, and with that. You know, I, I guess we paid them twenty five hundred dollars and then we split the, the revenue that came out of that event. Prior to me even coming here, the company changed the way that they wanted the contract to be done. And they wanted full payment upfront with us receiving one hundred percent of the profits of the ticket sales. In theory, that should have been fine, in practice or in, in actuality, it didn't. Gain us anything, in fact, it cost us money, so this budget was proposed with that event on there, remember that. Just because there was a line item in our budget doesn't mean that we'll move forward. It's already been discussed with the promotions committee that we will not be working with haunted history productions moving forward. But because that was the budget that was voted on by the board two months ago. But we kept that in there, although it's already been discussed that we won't be engaging with haunted history productions.
Right, so to add. Question, what we have exploring other alternative that's. We are, we are discussing a spooky market, which will not cost us eight thousand dollars. It will probably cost us two, three thousand dollars or probably, or hopefully it will make it. We didn't want to change a budget that if a company from when was approved. We have just changed, we proposing to make minor changes that we need to make to balance the budget for the twenty five thousand dollars. And as Dana said, just because something in the budget doesn't mean it's going to happen, right, we are discussing a lead act. As we be caring for them and that's a decision is made whether we should go ahead or not.
So, so just from my understanding, because we all understand that the budget is fluid. And we use as we see fit within those budgets and can move when, when a budget is in depth, a line of the deficit. You've already proposed the twenty five thousand dollars as requested by the borough has already been placed with the numbers that. That, that you, that we've now. Presented, so do you like a motion and second on that then? Isn't that open for discussion here?
Yes. I think that's what, yeah, that's a really good idea.
So I will tell you that, that. You know, all, all the, all the bar. All the budgets fluid. It's the same budget, we're gonna have to show the council next year, so just keep that in mind. That one of the things that they were concerned about was just not a wholesale cutting, right, so, so that's why I think the tightest. Cuts, I think in my opinion, have value because shows that you need to be caught up. Cuz, take that scale on each one of the models. I think that has value and I think that i- if we're able to stick within the budget or. If, if some event doesn't happen, something's replaced, at least it'll show. The governing body twenty twenty six that, that, you know, we, we didn't make the cuts at the price of the batch.
Right, can we call the. Haunted history event something else this time? Makes sense. I don't think council would want to see that.
We can call it anything we want, we can call it that, how we have done, you know, T V T.
I think we should, we should make that a.
Sure. So you're proposing to change the name.
Okay.
Well, I like that too, I think it's quite a turnaround. Then, then. Reestablish that place, that's been, that's been part of our. Infrastructure. Forever, so, so I appreciate the borough for picking that up, that, that always has to be there in our budget. And the only places we, you know, my issue being part of the. Finance organization, one part that we can really respectfully look to changes in marketing and in events, so I think it's. Everyone's enjoying the job. Yeah, I just want to say. And we, just hearing back from council. It's not just small sidewalk repairs. It's the upkeep, the small upkeep. Some things which may be bigger. That's what they really want to see in the budget. Wasn't just, I know it was talked about as sidewalk repairs from certain vendors. But there were other members that said. Yeah, keeping up the town. Highly important, great, we've done it for many years. The benches. Were always taken care of by the DSA. Always. Each year. Vision Street, just the, and we have infrastructure.
We do, and in. And I'll get to this when I discuss an update that we made to the transformation grant. And monies will be able to use toward those things from that grant that are specific to that grant. No, it's a grant we already have, is the point.
Some, right, part of our budget states that, like, we're getting some grants, it's not what they want to hear.
I, I appreciate that, but what I'm saying is we already have real money. That we can use this year, in fact, we have to use by June of twenty twenty six. And it is specific to what you're talking about. It, it'll be about sixty eight thousand dollars. From a real grant that we already have been approved for and must spend by June. Which grant is this? Wasn't approved yet until this morning, the New Jer, the state of New Jersey didn't approve the change in that grant until. I got the notification this morning and I notified the executive committee that we got that notification this morning.
Give you a quote, I think it was seventy five thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand.
Thousand dollars. Towards, in the grant description, towards storefront keeps, storefront vehicles, that wasn't something that this board approved, right, we never wanted to go ahead with it. However, we couldn't spend that money anyway, any other way unless we approved, so Dana made official change, was to change. The use of the bunch, which was approved this morning, so I think. Well, maybe now is the time to talk about it, so I think that grant. Allows us to spend that money on in, infrastructure and furniture and other beautification access making initiatives.
But that's, like I said, that's a comment you want to get over to council. That's part of that twenty five thousand dollars that you can include. Decide to tell them.
Right, but did. My understanding, at, at least, is that the twenty five thousand is specific to repairs, right? And the sixty eight thousand dollars that's in the grant is for more things like beautification, so. We can't use the sixty eight thousand dollars, for instance, to repair sidewalks. We can't use it for those types of things, what we can use it for. What we can use it for is to replace benches, what we can use it for is. Right.
And that council. Wasn't just about sidewalk. It's about the infrastructure, the upkeep.
Right.
Down town, which is.
Right, but without having been approved, like I said, the state approving that change, the revision we requested. I really didn't feel that it was appropriate to talk about something that we asked for but had not been approved by the state. Yeah.
And I think that also, when does our. Cleaning contract, though we talked about.
Cleaning contract ends on May thirty first, I've had multiple meetings recently with the company about certain things that we want to see done. We're working on that R F P, I'm in the process of developing a draft for it that will then be sent to the infrastructure committee to review. But the contract we currently have takes us through the end of, of May, May thirty first, two thousand twenty six.
I just feel like the value. The cost of it doesn't equal. And I, I went away for a weekend into a B I D, into a business improvement district, and I literally saw people to where. I'm here every day of the week, it's very difficult for me to see the value. And, and honestly, I've been a big owner of it, we've gone from multiple companies. And, you know, maybe we're not asking for the right thing, but I think that's real important at the events. To have a cleaning call and have labor, we don't have that, we need that to events. On the off days, I'm not sure that the value. Best. You know, something. Infrastructure, it's hard to discuss. As we go into the next contract with anybody.
Yeah, it was already a topic of discussion at just this past infrastructure committee meeting that I know Rick was at. And so it was already a topic of discussion and I will have a draft, probably by the next infrastructure. Committee meeting for everyone to review. Who's on the infrastructure committee now?
Why six and moving forward, we can work on clearing that submission, the scope of what the D P W does. Within the district because it's also very undefined role.
Yeah, I think, I mean, D P W is, is, you know, a gosh, right, so it's not like, and, and they work on the Friday. And. The idea, I think, was, and I think that you're right, I think we have to define example what they do, because in the last. I don't know, in, in the last month, you know, we had garbage cans overflow and there were a mess. And then we had stickers, signs, we have all these other things that are current. That, that I just feel like, I, I, you know, I think it's a good point, I think to really identify that. It is important and I know at all point we struggled for other as to what to do with this. Yeah, and I think that just moving forward, you just don't want to kick the can downstream that product, I think it needs to change. And really. You know, and I think you're right, better to find what's going to get done and what we really need to do, I think. The event dates extremely important. Because the next day is kind of, it's like, the event days are almost two day events, so it's. It's a day of and a day after. That's where.
Yeah, I, listen, Tim, I, I, I think that the conversation about the, the, the quality and the description of, of A B S and what, what other help we can get from D P W is useful and important to have. Particularly as we're developing an R F P for that work next year. But if we can maybe circle back to the issue at hand, namely the twenty twenty six budget. I think our time's going to be better spent and we can, we can move the A B S R F P conversation back down to the committee level. Where it should be, because I think everybody in the room agrees that their, their work is not great. We need them onsite more and, and they need to have more better, better defined duties, I mean, there's, there's really no point in, in beating this thing.
I was also, I made a motion to approve the changes and I didn't hear a second, but we talked about the session, but.
I, I apologize, Rick, I didn't hear that.
What? But I. I made a motion. To approve the changes for the budget for twenty five thousand dollars in the infrastructure as proposed.
I'd, I'd second that. Can we have a roll call vote, Kevin?
Sure. Tanya Althoff? Very clear. Yes. Beth Ackaway?
Yes.
Colin Chan?
Yes.
Natalia Clavon?
Yes.
Chris Edwards?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
No.
Adriana Popovich?
No.
Kevin Slukas, yes, Rick St. Pierre?
Yes.
Chad Stevens?
Yes.
Conlon has her hand raised, do you still have a question, Conlon? Uh, yeah, I had a couple. Actually, I really didn't know what we were voting on, I mean, so we're saying we're gonna use the grant into, with the grant money into the infrastructure money?
The vote was to adopt the amended draft budget in line with council's requirements. To set aside twenty five thousand dollars next year for sidewalk repair fund.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, okay, that's fine, yeah.
Do you need to change your vote?
Uh, yeah, I'll change it to no.
And did you have another question?
Uh, I mean, I kind of want to ask more question, how are we gonna move these money, but I don't know if this is the right place, yeah.
Well, Natalia was kind enough to give us a fairly lengthy presentation that took up the first fifteen minutes of our meeting.
It was also in the, it was also in the E N L.
Yeah, 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 I, I, yeah, I saw all of that. But I wasn't sure, I mean, I, I have it right in my phone, I'm just looking at it right now. So, I mean, you guys didn't really go over in terms of like the business mixer, so we're reducing the frequency, is that what you guys?
We didn't, we haven't decided that, we just reduced the business mixer line item by two thousand dollars. And we'll have to figure out whether we reduce in the ones, the, the, how many mixes we have or we'll find other ways to save the money.
Okay, so total reduction amount is two thousand dollars for that category.
Did it make search category, yes.
Okay, okay, but the annual budget right now is eight thousand, that's what it is. It was ten thousand. Oh, okay. It was reduced two thousand to the current number eight thousand. Okay, that is on the. Thousands, the proposed number, okay, gotcha, gotcha, yeah, alright. The other question I had is the reducing the community support. And sponsorship, so I wasn't sure what that line item really mean.
I'll take this one down. This is, historically, this is the, the money that we've used to support other events. And promotions in town that are not run by D S A, so things like. The Tour of Somerville, the Saint Patrick's Day Parade and other similar sort of community nonprofit driven things, right? At the beginning of twenty four, well, really, I guess, fall of twenty three. We agreed to give both the tour and the Saint Patrick's Day Parade four thousand dollars a year for the coming three years, which was. Twenty four, twenty five and twenty six, so four thousand apiece between, for those two. Comes to eight thousand and we're, we're reducing the amount we're budgeting in that category to still be able to do that. But really, nothing else. For those non D S A outside events.
So which event are we cutting out the support for?
We're not.
Okay, we're not, okay, but then how?
There were some miscellaneous funds in there just in case some other similar thing came up, right? So we're just, we're, we're getting rid of that kind, for lack of a better, that, that, that cushion. Because we've got to, we've got to contribute to the sidewalk repair fund.
Okay, so we're cutting two thousand dollars in that category, that's the total reduction in that category.
I believe so, that's right.
Yes. Okay, alright, so went from fifteen thousand to thirteen thousand, okay, gotcha, alright, thanks.
Okay, I lost track, but I, I think that was more yeses than nos, Kevin, did that matter, pass?
I had a seven, seven, three vote.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
The. Listen, this, this would be nice, obviously, if we didn't have to. Own one yard of money for construction, but if you think about it. It isn't eighty five thousand to a hundred thousand investment downtown, borough's matching two to one. And we're pulling anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars in a tree fund as well. So when you think about it, it's about a hundred thousand dollars of reinvestment. Or so, I mean, I'm sorry, into the S I D. So. Despite the council. You know, taking out our budget. You know, there, there has been. You know, the positive side is. Which they've never done before, we, we've spent money on the sidewalks, which there was no match. So we have a match and, and then we also have access to the tree fund, which, which is fairly substantial and hopefully, and I think the way that'll work. The borough's gonna be doing all the work, not the work, but, but really. The D S A is making a financial. Investment to the borough who's going to do the work. Investment to the buyer who's going to do the work. So at the end of the day, you know, it's not like we're gonna stab out shovels and. And, and or, or contractors through the DSA or anything else, so Miss Kelly still has to perform that. And I think that between the environmental commission, who I've engaged a little on this, the DSA, we're gonna have to kind of. You know, take and choose what we do with that money.
That there's actually, it brings me to a question. How is it going to work? So I understand that we are switching the money with former. What are you choosing in the process? Are we having a certain game to decide what we're going to do first and then when and follow?
I, 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 I think so. I mean, we're in transition. Well, we're going through a transition, changes of apartments at the end of the year as well. So until those folks come on board, actually, you know, they may have some ideas um as to what. What would work, the easiest, biggest thing for your money, I think. Uh, I think, I mean, collaboration, borough's gonna have to bid it out, borough's gonna have. Perform someone's work, the bid thresholds are up to forty three, oh, sorry, fifty three thousands, but we actually have, have more money. So I think it becomes like a bidding project, but we'll have, I mean, kind of collaborate till the next month. None of this work can get done until the end of the first quarter of the year, anyway.
I'm not, I'm not sure that anyone, any one of us at this table have any sort of level of expertise. To say how the sidewalks should look. I think if they're, they're bidding it out to like people that will come in and basically saw it's what, what's gonna look best.
I mean, I, I'm not sure that I understand the game with that. The DSA is being looked at and asked to. Meeting the sidewalks and ensure that the town, you know, the water looks, is that equal and, and clean, clear eyes. And I think I'm not saying that we should, that the DSA will say how the sidewalk should be done, of course, we don't have the technical expertise. But if we identify the areas that require our attention, the priority of that attention, then I think we should have. Part of the, we should be part of that discussion if we are going to be responsible, so it's something.
Historically, the DSA actually basically pointed out, well, that's what we're doing, right? So, I mean, in this case, there's trees involved, so it, it's a little more complicated. But, but I think, that being said, is that's why I bring the environmental commission and I say, which one? Which one do you think we can address without taking down the tree or which one is the tree officially dead that is gonna come down anyway?
Right, well, I'm sure the experts will help you, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, and the borough's engaged a couple of workers as well, so. Again, you know, I think we have to, from a board perspective, look at it as an investment into special public.
My, Angela, I, I, you mentioned that it's, it's a shame that we have to pull from the, you know, marketing budget and events and things like that. I, I disagree. I actually think that we're not moving up from it, putting it into infrastructure. I mean, we are like. You know, the landowners and developers that live and invest into the town, they don't just expect to see. You know, bands playing on Division Street every Thursday and money that's not returning ever. It's about safety, I think, and that, that it's all a balance. So if we put eighty percent of our time and attention into events and things like that. And twenty percent into, or even ten percent into infrastructure, you know, the other ten percent maybe into arts. I think we have an arts committee at this point, then I just, there's an imbalance that's created and it's not.
Well, the reason I say it's a shame is this budget was passed. This, this work has this budget without the twenty five percent interest. The only thing we're doing is mending it to, 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 to apply with twenty five, you know, it's not, right?
So that conversation's been twenty twenty six technically, because this is just. Easing, so to speak, but, you know, we should have always considered that in the first, but that's twenty twenty six. I definitely agree. Definitely. Uh, passed me. I don't know what happened. I don't know what I missed. I don't know what happened.
You know.
I don't know what happened. You go to some time, right?
Yes, infrastructure. Well, I'll give the grant update, which I sort of already did. The NJEDA grant that we currently have, it's a twenty five thousand. I mean, uh, yes, a twenty five thousand dollar grant. Um, we did, that's the work for that arterial. I'm not, I'm sorry, that's a fifty thousand dollar grant, excuse me. Um, that's the work that arterial is creating. It is, um, there were. In twenty twenty three, I believe, there were concept plans that were uh developed and approved by this board. Uh, the, the board and um. What they're doing now in twenty twenty five with this NJEDA grant, as well as money that's in the New Jersey Transformation Grant. Um, is to develop construction uh ready, or I should say bid ready construction plans. Shovel ready construction plans. Um, the infrastructure committee has reviewed those. They have a copy of everything that arterial. Has done thus far. Um, and again, those will be plans that should we ever have the money to do. Um, we'll be able to have the, the plans so that we can, we can go straight out to, to bid for those, uh, I guess improvements. They needed a two month extension. It should have been done in November because there was not a survey anywhere of Giordina. Um, as well as discussions that need to occur with P S E and G because of lighting that may be. May, they may or may not put into that plan on both of those locations. Um, hence the, the request for a two month extension. With the New Jersey Transformation Grant, that is a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, just to remind everybody. Originally, um, it was applied for, for fifty thousand dollars for curb appeal kits. There was, uh, I believe, another sixty thousand dollars that was for the other work arterial needed to do. Because the work that arterial is doing comes to a hundred and ten thousand dollars to create these, these construction plans. Um, and then the rest of the money was for um twenty two thousand dollars for the Big Belly units that are being delivered. Um, in fact, next week. Um, and then there was this other, like. Small amount of money for furniture. We asked for um, oh, probably two months ago. Um, to move that fifty thousand dollars uh away from the curb appeal kits. And it took until this morning for the state to send us the final approval, saying that they, they were allowing that. That's why we now have. Sixty eight thousand dollars, which we can put toward things that either arterial um is suggesting in the plans. Um, that they're making for us or other types of uh beautification or infrastructure, things that we want to do. Um, in the downtown area. So that's the grant update. And the Big Belly update, what else?
Even the other items we discussed included the sidewalk and the cleaning. Uh, yes, but also the garage storage. So I understand it's under discussion with the borough to let us lease. Storage space for a dollar, so that would save us five thousand dollars, the storage space that we currently pay for. Um, the other thing was the, the dog friendly banners.
Yes.
So pardon me if I'm wrong, I think it was twelve thousand five hundred each year for three years.
Well, the Summerset. Well, the, the Patriots are giving us twelve thousand five hundred dollars a year for three years, correct?
Yep, okay, and in exchange, we're um highlighting their sponsorship on fifteen banners downtown.
Correct. I mean, we needed to replace certain banners anyway that are falling apart and be, and ripped. Um, and so this was a way to both do the um promote the dog friendly initiative. Um, as well as highlight their sponsorship. And the cost of the banners um is minimal compared to. The amount of money that the Patriots is giving us. In fact, the amount of money the Patriots is giving us. Um, will pay for that entire event plus these banners.
Think that was in for infrastructure design.
What's the, what's the Big Belly update? Are they coming this month? Next week?
Next week.
And then remind my booth, who's, who's emptying them? Is that cool one to be ABS or?
Yes, because they're on Division Street, yes.
Your promotion, so?
Yep, I think that's a motion. You don't want to give us the key card for?
Yes, hi. All right, so um, there has been like a few changes. Um, the, one of the biggest ones I want to highlight is that we surpassed nineteen thousand followers on Instagram. So that's pretty big. We've been trying to get past that eighteen for a little while now, so we're officially nineteen thousand, which is super awesome. Um, on Instagram too, we, uh, in the month of October, we reached twenty seven thousand one hundred fifty three accounts. Um, our views was at three hundred and five thousand four hundred seventy eight. Uh, seventy seven percent of those were followers, twenty two point six were non-followers. Uh, we had a total of three thousand eight hundred sixty three interactions, eighty six percent followers, thirteen percent non-followers. Um, and like I said, the total followers now is nineteen thousand and three, which is really cool. Um, we had an additional two hundred and sixty two follows from last month. Um, one of our biggest day for followers was September fourteenth. Um, for Facebook, so something new from Facebook reporting is they've now disabled. The accounts reached, so that will not be part of the report anymore, um, but we can still talk about the views and everything. There, so we had three, three hundred thirty four thousand nine hundred sixty nine total views on Facebook. Forty percent followers, fifty nine percent non-followers, which that's, that I want to highlight, absolutely. Um, interactions, we had two thousand two hundred seventy total. Fifty seven percent followers, forty three percent non-followers. Uh, there are total followers on Facebook went up point seven percent, so we're at twenty two thousand three hundred fifty nine. Um, when we go to MailChimp. So we had a forty percent open rate for MailChimp. Um, and that was for both, um, to the businesses, it was forty eight point three percent to the public, thirty nine point five percent. Uh, some far with normal. Yeah, which, that's normal. Um, I'll move down to the placer data. So we had two hundred eighty four point one thousand visits. Um, which was up from last month, actually. Um, trying to think anything else that's important. Uh, visitors, one hundred forty five thousand visitors. Um, and the frequency was that one point nine five percent, which is, that's pretty, that's been pretty on par. We want that to go up. Um, and the average dwell time was seventy four minutes. And in your packets, there was also, um, I gave you the placer data for every event. That we had, that was in your original email that went out to you last week. For the past three years, twenty twenty three, twenty four and twenty five. And all of that went up in percentage, so. I also noted though anomalies that may have been because of weather. For instance, one particular Jubilee, it. Poured, absolutely poured. So I noted that in the report that may have accounted for why. On that particular Jubilee event, we didn't hit as many, you know, people as we had in, at other Jubilee events. Cause I think that's important to note.
Can we? Make sure that we have in our packets, um, informed the place or data, so we can look at it. We used to get a report that gave us an average monthly visits the year over year, the uh repeat schemes.
Is this not, huh? That's, it's not in there, because. Oh, because we printed out today. Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm sure I have a question, and I'm sure I probably don't have it answered right now, but if you can tell me at some point. About nineteen thousand followers, do we know where they are? Was there a chance of a distribution?
Uh, you're talking.
For the Instagram.
For Instagram, like. They do not give us that level of detail.
Really, see that I have this name, Savernall, this name, Hillsborough, this name, you're like, it's five of the half ones.
Okay, really, well, maybe you can show me, yeah, show me after. Um, I also wanted to point out that I, I did take a look at least today, Facebook, um, you know. Different posts that we do and the engagement we get from, from posts. Um, I will say that. Overall, in the last six months, the most, the post that was most engaged with was, of course, the tour bus of Meatloaf coming. To downtown. It had by far um the most, it had ninety six thousand views, that post alone. Um, the number two in the last six months post was the one, the. Like, uh, what we called the Puppy Palooza teaser, it got thirty three thousand views. And that one netted us a net gain of fifty two new followers.
I, um, I'm just looking at the placer data. Is there any information we can get? Uh, it looks like there's some increase, right, especially for the International Street Fair. Looks like it went up, um. Yeah, from ten K to, was it fourteen K? And then for the Jazz Festival from ten point five to twelve K, is there any factors that we can extrapolate from these? Or I mean, is something?
One of them was that it rained at last year's Central Jersey Jazz Fest. So again, that's noted in the report I gave you.
Right, okay.
As far as the, um, you know, the international um s- street fair, it. We changed the, both the name of the event as well as the focus of the event. Um, in twenty twenty five, um, that may have accounted for an increase in um the visitors.
Yeah, so I think it's good for us to kind of pay attention to why it's increasing or decreasing, right, ten K to fourteen K is a pretty good jump or even.
We discuss that during our promotions committees every month.
Hmm, okay, let's get to know at the board level too. All right.
Were there other subcommittees uh updates?
We have, um, we have multiple subcommittees going on right now. Um, one of them is the Music Fest Subcommittee. Um, the Music Festival um Subcommittee met. Um, they have been, um, you know, approved. The lineup that was um proposed um of the bands that we um had uh. Reached out to, that, you know, had them following that we were looking for and that um fit into the budget. Um, that was agreed upon by the Promotions Committee. Um, so we've reached out with performance agreements for, for all of them. Um, we also, let me think of the other subcommittees. Uh, we met with a group of um people. To start a cruise night potential subcommittee, um, and that included um people that are involved in the cruise nights. That have been coming for years and years and years, um, to discuss, you know, what they liked, what they was working and, and how we could. Um, potentially, you know, increase sponsorships or those types of things. We have reached out to all of our businesses um to get in, interest in being on subcommittees for Girls Night Out. Um, we will have the first subcommittee meeting of that, I believe, in the next few weeks. Um, we also have a pride committee, we have an international street fair committee. Um, but those are both events in June, so likely that those won't meet for the first time until after the new year.
Okay, thanks for that. And you want to, you want to roll right in Dana to the, the upcoming events?
Yeah, so, um, we have a very robust, um, you know, plan for Small Business Saturday. Um, we've gotten a lot of engagement with our posts. A lot of people are very excited about our posts. We have a um influencer that we've engaged to do a reel um coming up. Um, uh, you know, for Small Business Saturday, we've got a bunch of other ideas for reels that we want to do to promote Small Business Saturday. I, I think it's going to be an outstanding event. Um, we've got Jubilee, very exciting, um, you know, things that are going out. There about Jubilee. The Sharp family singers, as you know, have a, a huge social media following. They have agreed to do a reel that they'll post and tag us in, um, saying that they're coming to downtown Somerville and how excited they are. So their, their posts and their reels literally get, I don't know, tens of thousands of. Views each video and reel that they do, so that will be exciting um coming up.
Just for our community here, um, besides the singers, do we have any other dancers or performers?
I do.
Concerned about uh the perception, mercy, having enough of our community represented.
Yeah.
As well, so who else from the community?
Uh, we have two dance stu-, two local dance studios, um, that will be showcasing.
Uh, we have two dance stu- two local dance studios, um, that will be showcasing their students. Um, we have the Dart Dartmouth Sings Acapella Group. They're come, uh, one of their members lives in Somerville, so they really wanted, she wanted to bring her group to perform. Um, we have.
School of Rock.
School of Rock.
We're reaching out, um, to, I I've discussed some issues with, not issues, uh, the logistics of bringing the marching band, but I'm still working that out with Jason Kraska.
Where do you want to work?
To include. Yes.
One pair.
Oh, absolutely. We also have a student band, the the jazz, uh, jazz, the summer, the Somerville High School, no, the High School Jazz Ensemble is playing on the stage also.
Thank you.
Oh, and Black Belt Karate.
Black Belt World.
Yeah, Black Belt World.
Mm-hmm, awesome.
Do we promote them as well?
We do. Yes, they'll get, they'll get their own social media posts with the lineup of what's going on Division Street stage.
Sure, we're doing it, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah, keep them on the loop, absolutely.
Um, as far as the candlelight concerts, um, just in the last two weeks, sales of the candlelight concerts have gone up three point five times just in the last two weeks. Um, and so just for, for instance, uh, as of this morning, they've sold for the January twenty-fourth night, a hundred and seven tickets. Um, and for February fourteenth, it's sixty-five, but we're still quite a bit out. Um, we have been promoting that, um, through dozens and dozens of Facebook communities. We just had a reel that went out. Um, and, uh, this is also being obviously promoted by Fever as well. Um, we're, we're very excited about this collaboration that we have, um, moving forward. Then we have summer stage revisions. We have about, we've decided to book bands based upon their social media followings to try and pull in their, um, fans to come to downtown Somerville. Um, we're, I think, have over half of the dates already booked with bands that have agreed to to, um, play. And Starlit Cinema, we're working on, um, doing the themes and and getting different movies. We'll still send out, I believe it's in January after the New Year, the survey to the community of which movies that they'd like to see that fit within the theme that we've developed for that night to engage our, our businesses, um, with those themes.
You know, are those going to be moved to Thursdays?
Yes. So that's it for promotions. For Economic Vitality, we just had a great grand opening for Yoga Six. We've got Daphina's coming up this Friday. Um, we've got the Mixer at Mannion's on November eighteenth. Um, and the annual stakeholders meeting is Monday, January twelfth, location to be determined. But I am in negotiations with a couple of different people to try and, um, and hope to have a location within the next week or so. As far as my director's report, you guys have a copy of that. Um, so as we've talked about, we're obviously focused, uh, remains on curating experiences, not just events. Um, and on placemaking, that's a huge focus that we have. Um, it talks about the upcoming events. We have all of the dates, um, for two thousand twenty-six. We're also talking with the county about something called Tavern Talks and and, uh, joining them with History on the Green for the two hundred and fiftieth celebration. Um, so that we can highlight that and Somerville, uh, being a big part of that. Our team continues to advance a digital-first marketing and campaign strategy, um, focusing on high engagement content across all platforms. So you may have noticed an increase in the number of reels that we're doing. Um, and things to engage, um, our, you know, our, our people. And it also, the more engagement it gets, the more it gets out to people who don't just follow us on social media. And that's how we gain more followers, um, to our pages. Um, so we're focused on that. Um, we're also reopening our TikTok account. Um, we have a TikTok account. Um, it wasn't used for many years as it was thought that the demographic was not the demographic, it was a much younger demographic. But research shows that, um, the largest global user cohort now on TikTok is age twenty-five to thirty-four. Um, and so we believe that, um, this shift demonstrates a a much broadening and maturing user base and that it positions TikTok as a relevant channel for us. And so we're, we'll be posting shortly on TikTok as well. Um, we have the dog friendly, obviously, downtown and Puppy Palooza kickoff, that's going very well. As I saw, talked about the teaser that we did, we just sent to, um, the Patriots, um, not for their approval, but anything that has, and this goes for Robert Red Johnson, too. Anytime we put, um, a logo, um, of a corporate sponsor, they have to just take a look at, um, those assets to make sure that their brand is is being represented appropriately. So that just went out to them.
Yeah, Dana.
How are the local? We, we haven't reached out quite yet. A lot of the vendors that we're reaching out to right now are vets. Um, you know, um, you know, uh, pet insurance companies, those types of things. Um, we'll do a big push for, to encourage the, our own merchants, um, come the first of the year, um, to do things like sidewalk sales and those types of things.
Okay.
People in that space downtown. And, and I think that engaging them now would be critical support of the event.
Yeah.
Um, because I think that that's important. It's been some, you know, we've talked about closing the streets, blocking merchants, things like that. Um, in the past, where merchants get, get a little unsettled with that. I think that while that event will not close the streets, closing one street. I, I think that if, if one of the merchants wanted to participate in it, they may have to relocate. Because I think the earlier you can engage in the better.
Yeah, well, I mean, we've already spoken with, um, several merchants, including Penny from Hungry Hounds. So, um, it's not like we're not having those conversations.
Uh, we've been promoting it in our Monday email since we thought of the idea, so everyone should know it's coming. Um, and it's totally up to them how they want to participate or if they want to engage in conversation about how to participate more.
Yeah, so to look at it, this is a new event.
Right.
Has to be treated differently.
Yeah.
In the sense that, you know, other events, you want to participate, participate. That's great, but I think on a, on a new event, we have to, they have to be overly communicated.
Right.
Engage to participate.
Yeah, right. Everything that's been going on in the email, we've also been putting in, uh, little slips. And we've been going around and trying to get those to everybody as well. So we try to hit them up digitally, in person, um. Whenever we run into them, you know, what, whatever it takes, um, we have been working to engage everybody.
Yeah.
Do a street.
I would want to make sure that veteran spout isn't feeling that, that it's hurting them, they should always say it. Especially if they're in that space.
Right.
They should be saying it's absolutely helping.
Right.
And, you know, we're thrilled about.
Right.
And again, I know I'm speaking to the choir, but, but again, I think that needs to be believed.
Mm-hmm, if anybody and if anyone's online listening, um, if they want to come talk to us more, if they're not sure how they can engage and want to, um, workshop it with us, we're all, we're happy. We have tons of ideas for everybody. Um, yeah, so if anyone is un- unsure, please come talk to us.
I, I, I think that, again, because they're in the space, you need to talk about.
Yeah, and we, we're in front of their face a lot, so, but the one thing we can't do is read minds, so we just need a two-way street there, yeah.
And anyone who is involved, we've had multiple conversations with them already. Um, and we'll continue to do so.
Also wanting to add, Kevin, that with all of the PSA organized events from closing the streets, and we have the vendors. We usually try and be getting careful and not to block anyone. I mean, the problem is when we have, like, um, the outside vendors, the streets, streets. If there is that order, they are not as mindful, I think, of our vendors. Um, we do, I didn't have, um.
I, I, yeah, I recognize that, and I think that's good, but let's face it, know who the vendors are.
Yes, right.
They're not in that area down the block, right? But my, my only point, we need to make sure the vendor that's, that's in that space is also in the others.
That's a tip, but yes, I think.
Okay, um, again, we're, as Natalia pointed out, we continue to reach out. Um, while Restaurant Week is not something we think we can do in March of two thousand twenty-six, we're still continuing to engage with the food and beverage, um, businesses, um, and have had, um, you know, uh, conversations, um, including with RWJ about how we can do certain agreements with them for their visitors and their staff even as a, of a large, um, employer in the area. Um, we have two grants that we've applied for for placemaking. We hope to hear about one of them in December, um, in just a few weeks. That's the County LAP Grant. And then the other one is more likely going to be the, the T-Mobile Grant will be in January of two thousand twenty-six. Um, the mobile app is moving forward. We just sent to the Infrastructure and Design Committee today, um, some branding elements. But we're very excited about, um, you know, that app that that we're developing. They've built for us a demo and we have sent, like I said, those designs, uh, we use the demo to help create, um, you know, input from, from us and and things that we want to see in that app. Um, we're hosting a Q and A session with PSENG on December second, right here, um, to, with regard to their planned construction on West Main Street and Division Street, starting in January. That has been in all of our email communications for the last several weeks. Um, was a separate email about it and in the email that goes out every single Monday. And we'll obviously put out a big push, uh, the week before, reminding people of that, um, Q and A session that's coming up. Um, and, um, that's basically it for my director's report.
I have a question.
Thanks, Dana. Uh, we will be talking about the, uh, nominations for board member positions during executive, yes.
I, I don't know if I read it correctly, on the council, at the council meeting, it was discussed that it was going to be in a DSA event for vaccin- that that vaccination clinic was, what was that?
That will be a puppy, it's part of Puppy Palooza. It's a, it's a, it will be a, a a dog vaccination clinic that will be at that event on April twenty-six, twenty twenty-six.
That I don't have.
Oh.
No context to it, what's.
Oh, it's a, it's just a public service that we think would be a, a nice thing to do at that kickoff event. So that Somerville residents, um, if they haven't yet gotten their dog vaccinated, it will be a free vaccination clinic for Somerville residents.
Good chat.
Okay, uh, we will be, uh, discussing, uh, board nominations for board members for the upcoming year during executive session. For the context of the, the public portion of the meeting, we've put out a call for resumes. We've gotten some. There's, there is one, one eligible candidate that we will be discussing in executive session. And I gather there was a, uh, uh, point raised, for lack of a better, um, to have a discussion about term limits for DSA members. Um, I think, I think Rick, uh, raised that issue, so I'll, I'll let him take that and run with it.
Couple of things we have to talk about, I think, Chad, in the board is, and just some, some validation here. Our ordinance, I think, talks about term limits, right? And then two consecutive term limits and then, uh, one year off and you can reconsider again. I don't believe our bylaws are in, uh, communication or direct, um, ordinance. So my point to the board was about being in line with the ordinance and also due to the fact that we're not getting a lot of trustees coming to us, um, we want to consider inner bylaws, an emeritus position of someone who has some history, um, people that used to be on the board. It might add a lot to, um, growth cycle of the board. Or to consider as part of our bylaws that you can have your term limits, but the, the particular person can ask, can be asked by the board to consider this service or if they want to retire. Um, a more, I think, healthy way of having board members or trustees versus your time limit, tell me time limit is done, and now let's, um, look for new people. Um, I think with a small community and the, and the value of volunteers is, uh, the volunteers that make a difference, I think, are, are high, uh, but there's not enough volunteers out there, so. So there's a couple of things on, on the table. Uh, one is, is the ordinance that we currently have in relationship, proper relationship to our bylaws. And then will the board, uh, consider looking into changing the bylaws for the term limits of being, yes, you're appointed, but then, uh, you're asked to either, uh, you know, leave the board after that term limit or would you like to continue serving on the board? Uh, due to, again, what we'll talk about in his end of session, not enough people applying for the positions of the trustee. Uh, and, um, having board members that have an understanding of history. And so the narrative of, uh, twenty years or thirty years of this organization, actually, it's been like thirty-five, is understood by new board members in general, so I hope that makes sense to everybody, but I kind of rambled on a little bit about a couple of points, but, uh.
Yeah, no, no, I think you, I think you've encapsulated your, your thoughts on, on that.
Nice.
I mean, I'll let Kevin speak to what the ordinance says. The bylaws are clear that it's, it's a maximum of two terms. Uh, two full terms, I think it says, which sort of is a carve-out for folks like, uh, Adriana, who started her tenure, uh, on the board, uh, completing an, an unexpired term from a, a board member who left before, uh, their term had expired. Um, and, and an emeritus position is, is an interesting idea, though. I think usually that's a non-voting, uh, role. Um, so there may be some, I think there'd be some benefit to being able to share that history and explain some of the, the historic reasoning behind some, the way something is done or the way a promotion is handled. I'm not sure it goes a long way to solve any issues we might have with, um, with voting participation, having a quorum and all these sorts of things. But Kevin, can you speak to the, the, uh, the, the ordinance and whether or not it addresses term limits in some way?
The ordinance does. Um, I, I'd have to look at the ordinance compared to the bylaws. I wouldn't, you know, it's different. We, we, we do have to make that the same, obviously, yeah. The ordinance is a little more, I hate to say it, the ordinance is almost a fault, right? The bylaws that now govern the, go govern the board. Um, you know, I, I will tell you, I know most of the grants, they, they do ask us if we have term limits, because that's still half-term limits. Um, the way, and then, listen, I've been, I've been on the board since the beginning, right? This is the first year I've been on board, but we haven't had a lot of people. We've rejected people, right? So I think it's a somewhat a problem for, to recruit board members, right, over a period of time. The problem is, I think that we've been distracted by changes in staff, things like that, that we just didn't do. I mean, for the most part, we've had, unfortunately, had rejected, um, multiple people. And over the, over the, every year, this is just the first year that this has come up, that we really haven't had a tremendous influence, but again, I don't know if we, you know, made the effort, maybe was.
You, I know that some people, I mean, you could, or, and certain members mean, uh, uh, concentrated effort to each other, to the business owners, because it's a business owner position that we have, right? Most of them are business owners. Um, there's, there seems to be a lot of interest, and I, I don't know what it is, and maybe the the economy families is, the, you know, I don't know what it is, like, they're just, I personally talked to a lot of people, and they just, they don't seem to be interested in that.
And, and, and just myself, I, I think the term limits, I, I personally would oppose all overs that have voting rights. Um, until the position's filled by someone else. Now, granted, you're asking a board member, basically, you know, keep the seatable, which could be offensive, right? But, but I, I don't, I don't know if that's, you know, something that could be fair. Um, you know, it is, like I said, I know it's two full carries, uh, of total, you know, total six full years. Uh, that's it, the, um, you know, for someone that you can't kick off the board, I guess, at the very.
But, well, personally.
Have a loss, right?
I think personally, I think that there has to be a term clearance, that I wouldn't want to get hit on the T year term. But you think that there, we might, when I consider they can't on the number of terms if you can start consensus. And so, and now we can serve two terms and you're out. So I think what I, if I wanted to. So I think what I would, if I wanted to consider that, I would want to something where you can be applied for.
You're only you're only out you're only out for one year.
Right? Yeah, but it, yes, but right now it's just one year that will gonna be short.
Yeah, it's not short.
Well, you're not yet, right? They're still back. Yes, yes.
Yes, definitely, definitely specific to this year. Listen, you we can, we can do a bylaw change and then do a poison pill where it goes away at the end of whatever, right? And and in order to accommodate, you know, just we have to do a bylaw change to do that, which then kind of, you know, could be issued.
I also think that there is a lot to be said for what they said about the history. Because I mean, this is my, I've finished my second year on the board, right? I mean, there's still a lot. There's a lot that I've learned. There is still a lot that I don't know. I don't know the history, right? Or what happened ten years ago or twenty years ago. I wouldn't know why we did things in a way, right? There's a lot of infrastructure, other questions that were done in certain ways or certain reasons that someone like me, right, or the kind of Adriana who I knew to the board, wouldn't necessarily know where that knowledge is important.
I I.
Sometimes.
And I also do want to add that um in the in the, I guess, recent years, we have added members. You know, participation has been lighter, I want to say, for lack of a better word. Um, so I think it is important to have members that are like familiar with the process and how things go.
Same here.
Like, I mean, even right now, there's really, how many members do you have?
Yeah, nine plus a quarter.
So we have one quarter member.
Uh, yeah.
But, yeah. So there's only six of us and it's, I mean, even the just sitting here right now and physically, we're just. What I'm trying to say, I'm pointing to the participation part of it, right? I'm not saying that there's only six members. What I'm saying is that consistently when we meet, it seems like six members will actively participate in conversations, attend to meetings, attend to meetings that are not even a requirement for the board, you know, to be part of, I guess, DSA or, you know, just for their.
You know, in in fairness, all ten of us are on this on this meeting today.
I understand. What I'm saying is that, again, this conversation, even right now, tonight, a few other members have not really raised any questions or made any comments and it's it's okay and not a problem, but when it's every meeting, you start to question if they have interest in being on the board.
I mean, I will tell you, being on the executive board pretty much, which I started as well, is at the end of the first term, the executive board, almost, Rick, I said, as well. We've evaluated that with board and in some cases suggested to the board member that that um that this may not just be the right time for that. And then and they either resign or you don't be appointed. That's, you know, so, yeah, so, so, you know, and and that has occurred. So so I mean, and that's, and I think that reality was too busy for them, their life is busy, you know, with the exception to me.
So what the point I'm trying to make, I'm trying to make is say, for example, if replace Rick with someone with a new board member and they too are light on participation, then we may not even have enough people to vote on certain topics or, you know, or consider that their vote is like in the best interest of the town. Because they just, again, they participate in the background as just passively rather than actively.
I mean, that's a good point. So I mean, we could always evaluate at the end of it every year, also evaluate at the end of the term. Isn't there people that?
That's kind of what I'm suggesting that we consider as a warning. Doesn't necessarily mean to be, it can be random. I mean, Devin, as we as we new newly formed doesn't nonprofit, you get evaluated yearly, so you know, your next year, you have somebody else as administrator, but technically you're going to be here, so you're you're you don't have a term limit on your section, which is something to consider for the board as well. It's like, you know, administrator that doesn't have a term limit, you know, you do have a, you took, you know, borough term limit. It's it's an interesting one, right? So um, so, 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 so the point is that, yes, you know, when you're done, your term limits, you could be asked if you want to continue or not, and that will be part of our bylaws, that's the thing. Uh, many people that have been here for years of business people, they've been here forever, as you know, Randy and they and they said, well, I'd like to retire now. I think I've done my work or or uh very few people have been asked to leave. I've been asked to leave a few times, I think, uh, obviously is I don't, almost reord, like popping up.
Yeah, I I I do want to say something as well. Um, so it is required that board members uh must uh cannot miss more than three meetings out of the year. So that's something we should look at. Uh, but I do agree with Adriana that some of the board members have them been as active. Uh, participation has been very light. And I don't think those people should still stay on the board if this is not something they're interested in actively participating, right? Because we only have, you know, we don't have that many board members. We really need everybody on hands on deck to um solve a lot of the challenges that we're facing ahead of Somerville. Um, so I really think, you know, I mean, this is a good time to think about, you know, if we need to change anything. And if we do have really qualified people that wanted to, you know, maybe we can have a couple of members as emeritus that can stay beyond uh the current term limit. I think that might be a idea, but kind of limited to two uh members or, you know, some limited numbers. I do see value in some uh board members who's been here a very long time and has actively participated uh to stay on and know the history and know how to kind of take us forward, uh not backward. Um, so I think, yeah, there's, you know, I think we all should think about it. I mean, what makes sense uh for us as a board, right? Because we're just facing so many issues and, you know, it's all good situation, right? It's always good to be in flux and moving, right? Just to see if we can collectively move together uh to help Somerville to beca- become a stronger town.
Yeah, I think historically, you know, we've encouraged people that either wasn't put on the board or was on the board and was not really prompted to continue to participate. We just haven't had that happen. Um, you know, but it's it's it's, you know, the reality is, after someone serves six and a half years on board, in most cases, um, they've had enough and and they want to, right? And and but there's still always an opportunity for them to still participate. DSA, you could be on the committee, they could get reappointed a year later, you know. Uh, and I, you know, but I I think that, I mean, this year's a little unique for us, definitely unique. So so we have to kind of, well, I'm going to have to navigate that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't I don't know how you want to consider it, but that's really the point of this year's example of uh to consider what term limits mean or how, not that we don't have term limits, but how do we negotiate the term limits with our bylaws in coordination with the ordinance? Just check that if you because that's all I'm asking from that perspective. And then see, you know, what the board wants. You know, because the health of the board is the most important thing because then it transfers to Main Street. And if we're constantly figuring out, we're trying to figure out what our place is on Main Street, that's a problem. As our assessment grows, the accountability grows. So, you know, if you don't know what's going on with this board or with have the pulse of Main Street, it's going to affect in the long run, what we just left you with the government body and government, you know, um, and that's that's why I bring this up.
Chaz, go ahead.
Thank you. It's much easier when I'm there in person because the digital hand raise is not terribly affected. Um, in fairness, I'm not sure. Um, I think our bylaws say two full terms, not two full consecutive terms. Um, I'd have to reread them to be sure of that, but I I don't think taking a year off as the bylaws are written sufficiently resets anybody's clock. Um, so so there's that. Um, I agree with Kevin, uh just because somebody's terms are up does not mean they're they're gone in the wind. Um, if if Rick or myself or anyone else um chooses not to be on the, you know, terms out or chooses not to sit on the board uh any longer, we're all still welcome to sit on committees and act as a resource to the organization forever. So I don't I don't want the, you know, this notion of the uh the emeritus board member with the the three decades of history to to sort of cloud anyone's judgment on this on this issue. Um, I fear that the lack of of term limits will severely imperil our ability to qualify for grants, particularly some of the larger state funded grants. And if we're giving that up, we should just fold back into the borough. There's no reason to be a separate nonprofit with all that comes with it. Um, if not for the ability to apply for and obtain grants. I mean, it's it's as simple as that. There's a lot of admin in this organization for good reason. But if if there's no, if there's no upside for us specifically in these grant opportunities that are available only to nonprofits who are properly run and part of that is term limits for board members, um, I'm not sure what we're doing. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, I think.
Let me just say real quick, and I just, you know, with this with Chad, it's just a response. I I don't know what, then we have to define the term limit because if if you were to say to me that we're going to lose grant opportunities because we're nonprofit and term limits on board members and there's the plasitude of of nonprofits that I'm on, uh, they need those board members. So I'm not seeing term limits and grant and lack of granting opportunities are reality. So not really. I think we're talking about term limits by definition. And I think that's what we, what I'm asking the boys to consider is what do our term limits, I know what our term limits mean now, is that beneficial for us as it has defined moving forward? Um, because your point of of nonprofits having term limits, meaning that board members leave those nonprofits, I think is um breaking.
If if the grants, right, they, sorry, the grants, the grants do ask.
Oh, I know that, yeah. What I'm saying, by definition, what does your term limit actually mean? You know, ours mean this. What do theirs mean? You could be on the board for twenty years, you know, that's your term. I I, you know, you know what I'm saying?
So I think the term limits is actually less important than the fact that we're not getting interest in being on the board. So I think the bigger issue actually is recruitment. And I would imagine the spirit of the DSA board is to cycle through business owners in town. And if we're not doing that, then it's not really in what I understood is the spirit of the board. So uh, to fill a gap, I I would say it's fine to kindly ask one of our existing board members to stay on until we can uh fill the spot, but the bigger issue is we have to get more interest, business owners in town.
I I do agree with that, but I want to say that we do have a lot of interest in the position, just not from the business owners. There is a lot of public interest indeed on the board, but that's not the position that we have. I do want to say also that we are not a big downtown, right? So our SRT is quite small, so our pool of the business owners is limited. So as I said, also that pool, unless you get new business owners in town who are interested in being on the board, you kind of run out of that interest.
Well, maybe the makeup of the board should have another resident or less business owner.
Well, I would argue with that, that it's a SID that is primarily focuses on uh businesses in town that are promoting uh kind of like talents and businesses. So I don't know that I would be okay, agree in agreement with having more residents than business owners.
Maybe if we get down to travel.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I I get, I just buy the ones, maybe executives. Yeah.
I think there's been interest from the business owners, but they feel like somehow when they come in contact with us or one of us, they don't feel like their ideas are welcome or considered. Um, so they feel like they've been shut down whenever they come approach, you know, uh somehow. So I feel like we need to in be more inclusive and more encouraging for new ideas, right? I mean, obviously, some ideas are good, some ideas not so good, but they need to feel like they've been hurt, right? At least consider. I think it's the culture that we need to also think about changing as well.
My experience as a governor was when you met at the government reference office. I'm headed to DSA. What you mean? Look, Kevin, you you were sent to move us forward here at the, I would just need to thank you just to review it and then review it kind of. We all have to need to talk about, oh, I've got executive committee over next week or two. If Chad's okay with that. Kind of gets it, moving up and and look at the bylaws, look at the ordinance and see if there is and see if there's opportunity based on our potential predicament that do something.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm just, um, not to gloss over anything, um, there is, you also, Rick had said that you wanted to see the nomination of current board members for consideration for executive positions. Um, that doesn't have to be done at this uh board meeting. We do have another one in December because they wouldn't be uh voted on until the annual meeting in January, but I did want to not lose sight of that's an agenda item if that's where the, if the board still wants to do that tonight.
I think given given the time and that since we've still got an executive session ahead of us, maybe we can table that until the next meeting.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we addressed it because it's an agenda item, that's all.
Okay, uh, so if I understand on the on on the uh the the term limit conversation, bylaws, ordinance, et cetera, we're going to review that at executive over the coming week or ten days and then come back to the board with some insights. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other outstanding items? Okay. I see we have one guest in the audience in person, although I can't quite make out who it is on the camera.
It's Phil Duck. The Phil Duckery. So you have any thoughts all the time? Uh, no, I found the meeting very interesting and and invigorating and discouraging at the same time. Seeing that roughly half of your board is not present, they decided to sign on. I think three of them are probably watching Final Jeopardy right now instead of paying attention to what's going on in the meeting. I don't know what's going on. I I think the the energy of the board in their presence is so important. Uh, encouraging attendance at the meetings is a huge, huge part of success of any organization. And I've been, I'm involved with a whole bunch of different organizations and Zoom meetings are not the same. And I know where in the world is Zoom, but uh I I, you know, some people are in Nashville, Tennessee, and they they got to dial in, but others are sitting in in their pitches and deciding not to drive two miles to come to the meeting. You know, it's discouraging, but the interaction between board members and the facial expressions and all that is so important in any organization, whether it's the Board of Education, whether it's the Historic Advisory Committee, which I've been involved with for long, or any other organization. But I I'm also encouraged by a lot of discussions going on to see that there's a lot of, lot of, lot of hope and a lot of desire to make the board grow and be more successful. That's a reason I'm sitting here in the audience. I've been here past a few times, but I'm more more likely I'm one of the people on the screen that dials in as A B C five. Kind of remain be anonymous but paying attention to what's going on. Because the community means an awful lot to me. I've been here for nineteen seventy seven, I don't know how many years that is. That's so, oh, about fifty years. And a good part of the community, active in the community for forty years. And every year has been a rewarding year for me, so. Going on, anyway, I I thank you for for doing all the work you're doing. There's a lot to accomplish in the future, a lot of good programs you're talking about. And it needs a lot of help, a lot. And it needs a lot of help, a lot of, a lot of participation, a lot of energy. I think the board needs people that can make that happen.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Uh, I see Audrey from Fresh Restorations has been patiently sitting on camera for most of the meeting. Audrey, did you have something to add?
Um, what I wanted to say is, uh, two things. One is. If you guys ever need a space to have any meeting, I know you talked about a few different things. Um, obviously MySpace is, uh, you have to bring your own food. In there, it's not a restaurant, but if you ever need a space to convene. You, uh, you're welcome to use it and I will not charge you just being, you know, just part of the community. Um, I think I have seating for like seventy. Uh, but just putting that out there, you, reach out to me, you guys, during the week, if you need a meeting location. I don't have a lot of weeknight events, so at park and parking, we have our own lot. Uh, so, so that's that, I want to just put that out there, let you guys please know, you can reach out to me and you can use the space with no charge. Um, the other thing, I just have a question, okay, so you guys were talking about all the grant money you got, which I think is great. And you were talking about the sidewalks, um. Um, who is responsible for, this may be a loaded question. I do notice, uh, down the whole, not Division Street, obviously, but the whole Main Street. Uh, lots of buckling due to the old trees, so there's like two solutions, either take out the tree totally. Uh, plant a new one, re-level the pavers, or cut the, some of the roots out. Uh, as a like, as like, like a temporary solution, and I think every town that does tree lined has to deal with this. You know, but I, what I wanna say is, uh, we had to, my landlord had to. In order for me to comply with everything, redo my entire sidewalk, which no one ever goes to. Um, but I feel like it's really important grassroots like thing to have to get done. Who's responsible for paying that? I don't think the DSA should be responsible for paying for that.
Tell me. Can I just say?
You hit the nail on the head.
The reason many of us are smiling or, or laughing, um, is not because it's not a serious issue. I want that to be stated very clearly. It is a very serious issue. It's just, it's, it's just one that. We've spent the last at least three Randy council meetings. Um, in deep debate, um, over, um, and. We're still trying to, I guess, figure out, um, the exact nature. At the end of the day, um, I believe Mayor Gallagher said. It is all for all of us collectively to take responsibility for it, and I'm not, I don't believe I'm misquoting that, am I? Yeah, and, and.
I guess, but you guys, not everybody was involved in planting the trees in the first place, which I think the trees are awesome, but. This is standard in any town that wants to put, I'm just putting it out there that you guys are talking about a lot of really great things and I'm, I'm really happy about it. But when you walk down the Main Street, not Division Street. Every, it's all buckled and it's like, it doesn't look good. It's like the basic thing that I think a town should do, that's just my comment.
I, I think there's a basic agreement that the issue of the trees is something that does need to be addressed. Before the sidewalks are addressed.
Well, there's two options to fix the sidewalks. You either have to completely take the trees and replace them with new fresh young ones. Right? There's that, and then redo the pavers, or. Take them out, uh, or, or cut the roots, it's a temporary solution, like they do it in neighborhoods, in my neighborhood in Boundbrook, they do it in neighborhoods. They'll cut the roots and then re-level it, that's like a Band-Aid, but it's an option. But just, you know, you gotta get some estimates on that, but just saying like before anything else, to me, that just seems like a. I won't go on and on about it, but I just know my landlord had to pay for that to be done.
Yeah, no, you're, you're absolutely right. Of officially, as we understand it, the ordinances put the responsibility on the property owners. Um, any new developments or redevelopments typically include a requirement to replace. Uh, or repair the sidewalks around that property being developed. The trouble comes in when. There's sort of a more emergency repair or the tree that's kind of like the borough's tree has to be taken out and then there's repairs. It's a mess. Um, we're, uh, to satisfy the governing body, we've agreed to. To contribute to a fund that will, together with borough money. And all the rest will help to repair sections of broken sidewalks.
Some of the grant money you could allocate to, I don't know why you should have, but.
At all, cannot be used.
Oh, I see.
What the grant money can be used for is beautification, so that includes.
That doesn't, that doesn't fall under beautification.
No, that falls under construction. So, uh, the grant money, we can, we can get new benches, we can get new furniture, we can put in new signage. Um, there, there's a bunch of things we can do, um, but major like, uh, construction. And infrastructure, um, is not something, um, that, that, that particular grant, it allows us to do.
Well, that makes sense, but you wouldn't wanna put in new furniture until like the sidewalks looks like, you know, the ground up, like you kinda gotta fix that first, right?
No, well, the problem is that we have to use the grant money by June of twenty twenty-six, or we have to return the money.
Could you purchase the items, um, and have it wait until the sidewalks are fixed?
I mean, that's something that the Infrastructure and Design Committee will obviously.
Just putting it out there, as I walk down the Main Street, I know what my landlord had to do, and we're like, nobody even comes down by me. But as I'm, as I'm a business owner, but also a customer cruising around. It, it's like every single tree is uprooted and the pavers are like, uh, wonky and. You know, tripping hazard and all that, but it seems, you know, I won't say anything else about it, but since you said something about it. I figured I would just make a statement on it, that's all. Yeah, okay, well, to continue. Thank you guys for all your information and, and again, as I say.
Are you interested in a board position?
I don't think I'm qualified, but if you need a, a place for a meeting.
If you own a business in the city, you're qualified, likely.
Well, just so you know, you could use MySpace, no charge, if you need it, we have the private parking lot and the street and all that, so just so you guys know, okay?
Thank you.
You take care, have a good evening. Bye now.
See you. Uh, and there's a handful of other, uh, visitors on the Zoom. Uh, does anybody else have a, a comment or question before we close the public portion of the meeting?
Hi, yes, Brittany from Revive Consignment. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I love all the events coming up. Uh, if I could be on all the committees, I would. If I could be on the board, I would. Um, I think a lot of business owners just feel very overwhelmed. And are hustling just to survive, so adding, being a DSA board member to the mix is just a lot for them right now. Um, so that is a component of that. Uh, I did have a question for Becky, but I'm not sure she's there. Is she not there?
No, she's not here. Uh, Leah is here.
Okay, I can, I can ask Leah or Dana. I just wanted to know, what is the social media plan for the next three weeks? Um, to spread all the amazing things we're doing for Small Business Saturday?
Um, we're happy to share, um, out the plan. Basically, we, we do have an entire calendar of how we do make social media posts. As I said, we have an influencer coming, we have, um, another, uh, several reels planned, um, that we'll be doing. It, the event itself is boosted on social media platforms currently. Right. Um. And yeah. But we, we can, we can kind of write that all out and send it out if anybody wants to know what is our plan in the next several weeks for Small Business Saturday and Jubilee. And the other types of, uh, caroling and, and I guess winter programming that we have, holiday programming that we have. We're happy to, to send that out.
Okay, yeah, just excited to see, um, lots of Small Business Saturday posts, so I can share them.
Yes.
All right, thank you everyone for your hard work.
Thank you, Brittany.
Thanks, Brit. Okay, well, if that's it, I'll make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
All right, all right, thank you. Oh, I don't wanna do that, I want to do. Oh, wait, hold on.
Yeah, we're gonna have a quick executive, so everybody hang on if they can.
I, I have to, I have to sign out some people, hold on. There we go.
There we go. Okay, and.
It's, it's, wait. Is that okay, or have, who, who, who needs to be on here, Chaz?
Uh, all of us.
Okay, everybody that's on the, on the Zoom still should be here.
Uh, yeah, I just see myself, Conlon and Beth.
Yeah, and then the rest of the board, so we just have, um, one guest in our audience who we were just waiting on, and then we're good.
Thanks, Phil, I will see you Wednesday.
I'll see you Wednesday.
Uh, yeah, and you'll need to stop the recording.
So, I think I have to, I'm gonna have to stop recording. Um.
I think you can stop recording without stopping the Zoom, can't you?
I could, yes.